We'll call the order of the special meeting for February 4th, 2013. Welcome, everybody. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and as a symbol of perfect friendship among the United States.
First item on the agenda today is the approval of this special meeting agenda. Is there anything changes need to become, John?
None that I know of, Mr. Chairman.
Can I get a motion?
I approve the agenda.
Can I second? There's a motion and proper second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion?
No, sir.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolutions, approve or disapprove a resolution authorizing approving submission of completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority to acquire a fire truck for the Sapien Creek Volunteer Fire Department. John, you want to go over that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Where's your mic, Paul?
I let him borrow it down there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What we have is we've gone to the New Mexico Fire and Dance Authority's Sapien Creek Volunteer Fire Department. They wish to purchase a new truck. They're looking at providing most of the funding out of their state fire funds that they currently have. They've gotten approval from the Fire Marshal's Office to spend it. They're looking at taking out a loan for a small portion, it's about $25,000, just so it'd make it more flexible for their department and their spending coming in the future. We've already turned in the application to the New Mexico Finance Authority, which will go in front of their board towards the end of February, when they meet in the last week of February. And as part of that packet is just this resolution stating that we do have the authority to enter into a loan agreement with them and that will carry forward, it will not be against any of our bylaws, and it'll carry forward the process for them so that they can go ahead and get that fire truck for that district.
Okay. Any questions for John?
No, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Resolution Number R-13-5.
Second, Ed. There's a motion and proper second to approve Resolution R-1305. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item B, approve or disapprove Resolution Number R-1306, authorizing and approving the submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority to acquire a fair barn for the benefit of governmental unit and its citizens. John, you want to go over that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is with the New Mexico Finance Authority as well, and what this is, is to replace the fair barn that was hit by the microburst down in the Cliffs Hila area. We've got a preliminary design into them, the application packet. This is approximately a loan for $600,000. The interest rate we're looking at, the seven-year loan, and the rate that they quoted us is about a 1.8% interest rate on this loan, so it's a very good opportunity for us to get the money to where we can build that fair barn before the fair this year in September. We had looked at going through the capital outlay process in the state of New Mexico, but unfortunately, that process takes, it's a lengthy process, and if we were to get funded, we would not be able to expend those funds until after July 1st of this year, and so it cuts the timeline to get it done before September, very short. So, the application is in their hands. This will also go in front of the New Mexico Finance Authority Board on the February meeting at the last week of February, and everything else is in line.
Okay. Any questions for John on this?
Chairman, make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-1306.
Second. There's a motion and proper second to approve Resolution R-136. Is there any discussion on that motion, Commissioners?
No, sir.
Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item C, approve or disapprove Resolution R-1307. This is intent to consider an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing a tax rebate to benefit low-income property taxpayers for the taxable years 2013, 2014. John, you want to go over that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm going to convert to the county attorney, Abby, to put this together and done the research on this.
Okay. Thank you, Abby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an ordinance that the Commissioner needs to consider in every odd number of year in which we have not passed the ordinance. It's an ordinance that will ask you to consider whether we should start a program that will permit our local property taxpayers to collect a low-income rebate.
A low-income rebate from what?
They'll be able to collect it on their income tax, but as a criteria to do that, they will have to pay property taxes on a residence in Grant County. Does that make sense? There's quite a few criteria, but there's an income criteria, I think it's you have to be $24,000 or below, and then you have to have the property here in Grant County, you have to pay taxes on the property, and then you can attempt to collect a rebate through your income tax. And after the state, you know, after people qualify for the rebate, the state will essentially send us a bill at the end of the year, and in Grant County, we will have to pay that back. So it is something that will cost the county.
Okay.
But all you have, I'm not necessarily asking or recommending that you approve it, you just need to consider it in every odd year.
Okay. Now, the numbers I saw, the income had to be so low that more than likely, they would not pay taxes to begin with, and you can't get a rebate unless you pay taxes, so there's only one county in the state doing it.
I think there are two.
Two.
Los Alamos and Santa Fe. And we do have some numbers on how much it's costing Santa Fe, and we can go over those now, or we can go over them at the hearing. And what this resolution now is just that you are instructing us to go ahead and advertise for the hearing that we will hold on the 21st of February, and at that hearing is where you will consider the ordinance, and we can have a full discussion on the agenda item.
So if we don't approve this, do we need?
I would recommend, I would recommend that you do approve this.
Okay.
Because as required by statute, we need to go ahead and have the hearing to consider the ordinance down the road. When we have the hearing, that will be when you decide whether to enact the rebate or not.
Thank you very much.
All we're doing tonight is just intent to consider this ordinance. That's it. We're not passing anything.
Yeah, and if you look on page three of the proposed ordinance, it lists out the criteria for the income, that if you're from zero to $8,000, you get a 75% property tax liability rebate. If you go eight to 10, and goes all the way up from 22 to 24, you only can get a rebate of 35%. And so it's not a lot.
This draft will be available clerk's office for the public to kind of take a look at.
For two weeks. And then by statute, there's also other ways that we have to publicize it, it's going to be?
It'll be broadcast on the radio.
Yes.
Right now, Randy's working on figuring out which radio stations would be the best and putting together a broadcast statement, and we'll also be putting it in the paper.
And this is all per statute, state statute.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll accept the motion.
Chairman, I would, a motion to approve Resolution R-1307.
Can I second? There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution R-1307. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D, approve or disapprove Resolution Number R-1308, opposition to House Bill 21 of the 2013 regular session, which amends the Open Meetings Act to require an agenda be available to the public and posted on the public body's website at least 72 hours rather than 24 hours prior to the meeting, except in the event of an emergency. John, you want to go over that real quick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is a bill that's making its way through the legislation pretty quick this year, which is surprising to us. It's amending the Open Meetings Act. Currently, we give 24-hour notice or more because the Commission holds a work session on Tuesday to discuss the agenda and go over it. It's open to the public, it's also advertised on catch, and then 24 hours prior, we set the agenda, and no additional action items can be added. When the Commission comes into a meeting, we can remove an item, but we can't add any action items to an agenda. With this law, what it'll do is it'll move that 24-hour period to 72, which makes it to where the work session that we have on Tuesdays would no longer be viable for going over the agenda, being able to add things. It would make it hard in certain circumstances where the clerk's office, if they have an election and need to canvass, and the Commission's having a meeting, we can't add it to that meeting agenda. If it's within 72 hours, we would have to call special meetings. So you're going to spend a lot of time calling special meetings, but you've got a three-day notice from that. When we get our tax rates in from the state, if it's close to a Commission meeting, we would have to call special meetings for those times.
Actually, emergency, right?
Emergency. In that case, it'd probably be emergency because it had to do with the financial of the state. So it makes it very restrictive. What we feel, like all the counties are feeling, is that this will actually have the reverse effect of what they're thinking. Instead of opening up government, it's actually going to close it down because governing bodies are going to have no choice but to let staff take care of more items instead of bringing contracts in front of the Commission. Sometimes we have a tight deadline on them that we'll have to turn around and go ahead and authorize those contracts, send them back to the people we have, and then come back at a later date and let the Commission know what we did. So it'll actually close it down instead of opening it up. And so that's why the counties are going against House Bill 21, just because it puts more restrictions on trying to have us bring things to the Commission in an open meeting, and it actually makes it to where we'll do it behind in the administrative function or start calling a bunch of special meetings. The other item is, if you have an emergency meeting, you currently have to, you have five days to report it to the Attorney General's Office under House Bill 21, which is self-reporting to them, which some of the counties feel it could be self-reporting a crime if you misread the Open Meetings Act and you had an emergency meeting and it wasn't, the Attorney General decided to deem it not an emergency. They could find you in violation of that Emergency Meeting Act.
Okay.
So, a lot of the counties are coming to go against it as well as municipalities, just because we feel it actually closes us down instead of opening us up to the public, because our agendas are always available. We talk with people, people call and ask for a draft, we send it to them, and like I said, currently on Tuesday, we have it out there where we tell people what the agenda is.
I personally think it's kind of funny coming from a group of people that post a note on a door saying the agenda's to be announced later, and the meeting's been moved to a different room at a different time with about two minutes' notice and do all of their business behind closed doors in the guise of caucus, so that being said, just made all my state legislators happy with that.
I'm sure.
But, not a good time to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to approve Resolution of R-1308 in opposition to House Bill 21.
I would second that. There's a motion and proper second to approve the Resolution R-1308 in opposition to House Bill 21. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item E, approve or disapprove Resolution Number R-1309, authorizing and approving the submission of a completed application for the Community Development Block Grant Program for the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration, Local Government Division, and authorizing the county manager to act as the authorized representative for all matters pertaining to this program. John, are you going to yield to Anthony in this respect? Okay, Anthony, would you like to go over that for us, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a requirement of the Community Development Block Grant Program that the governing body was entered into a resolution to apply for CDBG monies. They should want to apply for a lift station for Fort Baird Hospital and estimated $232,000, which would be 90% CDBG, and 10% would come from the county, which would be about $23,000. I'm assuming it would probably be within our budget for professional services, which would be plan and design.
Thank you very much. Any question for Anthony? Seeing none, I accept the motion.
Chair, I would make a motion to approve R-1309.
Can I second? There's a motion and proper second to approve Resolution Number R-1309. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business, approve or disapprove sole community provider funding request from the Hila Regional Medical Center in the amount of $22,403,020, and $20.70, and I know we have Ms. Alred here to give us a little explanation, going to save John's butt tonight.
Thanks for coming. You're welcome. I don't know quite what happened, and this didn't get on the agenda last time, but we appreciate your consideration tonight. This is our regular annual request. There's actually a typo in the second line, but it really doesn't matter because we don't think the state's going to give us as much as we request anyway. They typically don't, they typically adjust it downwards somewhat, and we haven't heard yet what that percentage increase is going to be, but this is our standard annual request for the next fiscal year. This will start in July of '13, so this is important to the hospital as we start our budgeting process and that sort of thing. So we're before you to ask your consideration this evening.
Okay, well, you know, you are actually the whole reason for this special meeting tonight that turned into this, so this was the originally only agenda item.
It's our fault, yeah. We appreciate that.
So.
As long as we don't get any business out of it, we're good.
Yeah, no doubt. Okay. Any questions from Ms. Alred?
All right.
Okay. Just have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the sole community provider funding request from Hila Regional Medical Center in the amount of $22,403,20, and $0.70.
I second that. There's a motion and proper second to approve the sole community provider funding for Hila Regional Medical Center. Is there any discussion on that motion? That sounds like a lot of money, doesn't it?
Oh, bunch.
Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much for coming.
It does sound like a lot of money, and I'd like to reiterate that that essentially means free care that's paid for from the taxpayers of Grant County, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Go ahead and use these three chairs here on the side, or four chairs, if you all care to, that people are sitting and standing in the back. Oh, there's some more chairs in the back? Feel free to grab some of those chairs if you guys, if you all wish to use those chairs there in the corner.
Okay. Item G, approve or disapprove the sole community provider funding request from Memorial Medical Center in the amount of $85,318. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is on the same lines as what Ms. Alred just spoke of to the Commission. Down at Memorial Medical Center, there's a small population of Grant County that travels, that they provide the sole community hospital care for them. So their request is for the $85,318. It's up 3% from last year at $82,833, and as I presented to the Commission before, I don't know that they ever request this money. The only ones that we ever have come in front of us is Hila Regional. We've never seen anything from them, but each year, the Commission does approve in case they do come and ask for some of this money to treat some of the residents of Grant County.
So we shouldn't advertise this.
Make us.
Right. Okay. Any questions for John? Seeing none, I accept the motion.
Chairman, I would approve, make a motion to approve sole community provider funding request from Memorial Medical Center in the amount of $85,318.
Can I second? There's a motion and proper second to approve the sole community provider funding for Memorial Medical Center. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Last item on the agenda is the update from the United States Forest Service, Hila National Forest, and if you guys, if you need more mics or something, we'll gladly bring them down, and if you'll introduce yourself before we get started, we'd appreciate it.
And I also have Lisa Mizuno from my staff. She's been in charge of overseeing our travel management process, and Andrew Locher, who is providing technical support. First, I want to thank the Commissioners for inviting us here tonight to give an update about where we are with the travel management process. I want to also thank those of you who are in attendance and are showing some interest in what we're doing. We don't always get this kind of interest in everything we do, so. You know, the Forest Service has been privileged to manage the Hila National Forest for over a hundred years, and we understand what we're doing is a very special thing. The forest is managed for multiple use, and we understand that, so we're not here to say we're not going to do one thing or another, but we also realize we have folks that may not totally agree with everything we do, so that's part of what we balance. One thing I do want to say about the travel management process is that despite what rumors people might have heard, there's no decision been made yet. We hope to make that decision later this spring, and that's what we're aiming for. We had originally planned to do it last, end of last summer, but we got a little bit diverted by the fire, and that took a lot of our key people away. We're also, figure out my notes here. Oh, yeah. We're also looking, I want to make sure people understand that part of what we're doing, we received over 2,000 comments from the public, and it's important to us to look at every one of those comments and consider them before we make a final decision, so that's part of what we're doing now. Lisa's put together a presentation here that'll kind of go over the history of what started this whole process, and what we've been through, and where we are now with the whole process, so I'll have her go over that now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I provided a handout for the Commissioners that goes through the PowerPoint. Also, just to let everybody know that this PowerPoint will be posted to our website later this week, so if you don't catch or something up here, you can go to our website, and it'll be there for you to look at at that time. So as Kelly said, you know, we're going to kind of look at the origins of the plan and some of the elements of what we've been doing through this process over the years, and where we're at, and what's going to happen next. So, you know, what is the rule? You know, the rule was established, establishes a system of roads, trails, and areas designated for motorized use. Now, in terms of the definition of motorized use, that is not just ATVs, that includes cars, trucks, SUVs, any type of motorized vehicle. Ten to the rule is to sustain natural resource values, enhance motorized opportunities, and also, you know, provide those opportunities for non-motorized uses as well. So where did this come from? Over the past 20 to 30 years, there's been a tremendous increase in the number of ATV, SUV, off-highway vehicle sales since the 70s. Along with that, the technology of these vehicles have allowed these vehicles to go to areas where on public lands, basically, we never thought they were able to travel before. So with this, we've seen an increase of impacts to national forest lands. This has prompted the Forests to take a closer look at our management of off-highway vehicles, and also during that period of time, the chief had identified this as one of the primary concerns on the health of our forests. Also, the purpose of the executive orders 11-644 and 11-989, 11-644 was established in 1972. We're finding that we can no longer meet what those executive orders are directing the federal agencies to do, which is to ensure that the use of these vehicles, basically, you know, we're supposed to protect the resources, look out for the safety of all users, and minimize the conflict of those users. So the result of these changes that have occurred over time is basically in 2004, a proposed rule was put out for travel management, which was finalized in November 2005 and became effective in December 9th of 2005. The key components of the rule is that we are required to designate a system of roads, trails, and areas open motorized vehicles. This is also going to provide a consistent terminology and language across the nation because all national forests are doing this, so the terminology across national forests regarding motorized uses will be the same, and those regulatory motor vehicle use maps will look the same as well. Also requires public involvement, which includes that involvement with our state and local agencies. And this also prohibits any motor vehicle use off of that designated road system, which eliminates basically the cross-country travel. Through this process, we've been getting a lot of questions raised about RS2477 claims. Currently, the Forest Service does not have the authority to validate any of those claims. These claims have to go through a court system. Until that time, the Forest Service is directed to manage and to administer those roads. Some tools that are available to us outside of the courts are cooperative road maintenance agreements or conveyances, which it previously, Grant County as well as other counties around here, have used on some of our roads on the national forest. Let's move into the Hila National Forest process. You know, the rule became final and became effective in December of 2005. Beginning in 2006 to 2007, the Forest held 46 public meetings, open houses, to introduce this rule to the public, as well as present what our process was going to be to get through this process. During these open houses, meetings, we provide opportunity for the public to view our transportation maps, interact with our district staffs, and give input. We had over 900 people attend during that period, and also during this period, we had numerous individual meetings. We contacted our ranch deputies, private landowners, our outfitter guides. We made presentations to all the counties to introduce the rule to them as well. We had early meetings with fish and water source, New Mexican fish user groups, that's including the off-road vehicle groups, and our horsemen groups, as well as our conservation The resulting information we received from the 2006 to 2007 effort, we put it all together, developed a draft proposal, and in 2008, we went out again to the public, remind them what the travel management was about, we gave them the opportunity to review those draft proposals, provide us more input, and an opportunity to improve our proposal. Prior to us going out to the public, we spent time with the county Commissioners to give them a heads-up, what we were planning to do, what information we were going to share, so that if they received questions, they knew what was going to be presented before the workshops were held. We held 18 workshops across the forest, we had over 800 people attend, and received about 2,000 comments. So in 2009, on September 11th, we issued the proposed action. This was published in the Federal Register, and this began the formal NEPA process. For the scoping, basically, we mailed out approximately 3,000 letters, plus another thousand emails. We posted the maps and the proposed action to our website, and we, to further outreach to the public, we put out paid ads in the paper, put out radio ads, and we posted flyers throughout all the communities within the forest, letting those happening. So we held open houses from Lordsburg all the way up to Camado and out to Las Cruces. So there were 10 open houses, we had 310 Ds, and we ended up with over 16,000 comments during that scoping period. So through scoping, the scoping comments established the issues. So through scoping, the scoping comments established the issues. And so we identified the significant issues, and from that, developed alternatives to that proposal that went out. Four issues were identified, and that was motorized routes, motorized dispersed recreation or camping, motorized big game retrieval in areas. When you look at each of these issues, really, the comments range from "we want some," "we want more," "we want less." So it's not just the topic of motorized routes, it's the gamut, the range of those things. And then from those issues, we developed a range of alternatives, C through G, and the DEIS, to address those issues. So the DEIS, the Draft Impact Statement, went out for comment in January, ran for 60 days. We contacted those over 16,500 individuals, organizations, tribes, local counties, state and federal governments. We held four open houses around the forest in Las Cruces, attended by over 400 people, and as we said, we received over 2,000 comments. So the question came is, where did the comments come from? Nearly three-quarters of the comments came from the state of New Mexico, either a city or zip code within New Mexico. And then we do have some other states, a few foreign countries, some unknowns, and then our surrounding states are also broken out there. But the majority came from the state of New Mexico. Then when you look within New Mexico, I looked at the four counties that the forest overlaps, and that 60% of those comments in New Mexico came from these four counties, with 42% coming from Grant, and the rest coming from other counties within the state. So how are the DEIS comments used? Basically, they were using them to correct any information, were considering any specific route or area information that there was provided in the comments, modification of one or more alternatives depending on the information provided, and also improving effects analysis where more updated or additional information was provided as well. So I want to share some of the elements from the DEIS, and I'm going to start with the miles of roads open to motorized uses. Now, remember when I talked about the issues that, you know, for the public, motorized uses, you know, they want, you have the public comment from wanting more to wanting less. And if you can see here, through the various alternatives from C through G, you'll see a various range of open routes to address this issue. The different colors in this graph represent each of the counties. Grant County is in orange. Throughout this process, there's been concerns that we're closing off areas of the forest based on the miles of roads that are being closed. So using alternative G from the DEIS, just as an example, we looked at the distribution of the length of roads or segment of roads that we proposed to close to motorized uses. In this graph, the blue bars are forest totals, and the orange is a subset, which is Grant County. As you can see, right here is the break from, this is zero, this is 1.25 miles right here. Majority of the road lengths that we're proposing to close are under 1.25 miles in length. There are some roads out here longer than 1.25 miles, but there are very few above Motorized dispersed camping, there's some misconceptions, there's different ideas about what this is. You know, on the forest, motorized dispersed camping is primarily characterized as vehicles, towing trailers, or other types of trailers, you know, travel trailers or other types of trailers, driving off-road some distance and setting up a camp. The activities or the makeup of the camp is centralized around those vehicles. The majority of the existing motorized dispersed camping sites, we feel, are captured within the corridors that are proposed in any of the alternatives. I do want to note that motorized camping, where you're camping with your vehicle, is not limited to just being within the corridors. On proposed open roads, where there are no corridors proposed, you can still park within a vehicle length, and that vehicle length includes a trailer, and camp there. So you can go to any open road, pull off the road, set up your trailer there, and camp. So you're not limited to just parking, camping in the corridors. If you're tent or hiking, you can go any distance from your vehicle. What this rule's about is where the vehicle goes, not where you're hiking or camping. So here are the miles of motorized dispersed camping corridor by alternative, and once again, I broke this down by county. As you can see, alternative E has no proposed motorized dispersed camping, and that's just an element of what the alternative is about. But remember that motorized dispersed camping, you can still park and camp adjacent along roads that are open in that alternative. So that brings us today. So where are we at today? As Kelly mentioned, we are currently responding to the more than 2,000 comments received. We're beginning to review those to ensure that we have checked each one and responded to each one. And then we're also now starting to revise reports and revise the EIS. So what comes next? You know, we are estimating completion of the final EIS and the record decision this spring. As part of the NEPA process, when this document and decision goes out, the document is out for a 45-day appeal period. So all those who commented will be receiving this document and rod for 45 days to review So, um, okay. After the decision's made, what we then do is create what's called the motor vehicle use map. That map is the regulatory map for this process. Any changes, basically, the publication will have the designated changes on it. Any changes in the motorized uses that are currently on the forest right now will not go into effect until that map is published. So any, whatever the decision decides in terms of motorized uses will go into effect when the map is published. And of course, you know, always the question of, can changes be made to that map once it's published? And yes, there can be. The map is going to be reviewed annually, and will be revised as needed to meet the changing conditions or needs. Those changing conditions or needs are not going to only be identified by ourselves, but also the public can also identify those needs as well. This process may occur with other forest project proposals that go out there, or it may be a standalone, we look at a set of roads on its own as a project. So how will these revisions be made? Per the rule and by NEPA, this will be a public process. There will be public involvement in these changes. So to make any changes to the motor vehicle use map, the public will be notified, they will have opportunity to comment, and this will be consistent with the National Environmental Policy Act. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Kelly, do you have anything to add today?
You know, like Lisa said, this has been a really long process, and I know folks are, at least most folks are ready for us to make a decision, one way or the other, as to what they hope to see on the ground. So when a decision is made, the important thing is that it may or may not be changed in the future based on what the public would like us to do, what we mind when we get out there on the ground. And we will get that input from everybody and allow them a chance to comment on that. Again, like she said, it may not be us going back out to the public with a new travel management process, it may be that we're, we've got another project going on, a vegetation project or something else, that that area encompasses an area where those roads are part of that area, and we consider it in that. But we want to make sure everybody realizes that their input is important to us, and we do consider that in any decisions we make. And we plan to continue doing that as well.
Okay, thank you very much. We really appreciate you guys coming tonight and giving us this information. At this time, I'm going to ask the commissioners if they have any questions. Commissioner, Commissioner Judge Hall?
I guess the first thing I should say is that I appreciate the work that's been put into this. I know it's a lot of work, it's a mandate that's coming from somewhere else, and then you're put to do the task. But I've got a statement I'd like to make, and it comes from, comes from me. I have read, studied, and studied the U.S. Forest Service DEIS Draft Environmental Impact Statement for Travel Management on the Gila National Forest, and I have some concerns. The national forest, known as the land of many uses, will soon be known as the Gila National Forest of many restrictions, it's a fear of mine. I've always felt comfortable in the forest. We spent a lot of time there. In my opinion, the DEIS is ill-advised impacting the citizens of Grant County who have used the Gila National Forest for generations, failing to consider all values, cultural, economic, recreational, and overall well-being of its citizens and communities. The people of Grant County should also be concerned or considered in this impact statement. As stated in your draft, you have not completed your study as of yet, and will be evaluated, and will evaluate the plan during the next three years. During this period of time, we're playing with the lives and the future of the people and communities of Grant County. In 2011, the Grant County Commissioners Resolution R. 1108 resisted the TMP Travel Management Plan. I hope I'm not stealing someone's fire here. But in 2013, the New Mexico Association of Counties, County Commissioner affiliate in New Mexico, representing all counties in New Mexico, resisted the TMP Travel Management Plan. In 2013, the New Mexico Association of Counties Board of Directors Resolution 2013-20, representing all the county elected offices, affiliates in New Mexico, resisted the TMP Travel Management Plan. Do you see the message? I hope you understand. Slow down, and let's work on these issues together, one at a time. Let us agree on an issue, implement that issue, and then go to the next issue. All these issues being thrown at the public and at the communities at one time is suffocating. It's hard for the public, let alone someone who has a copy of this and has read it, to understand it. And then to get a map that a lot, a lot of people don't understand. I had a hard time getting to a party last night just outside, just down the road, and they drew me a map. So I'm really concerned about that. The other thing I'm concerned about is enforcement. Who's going to enforce the plan on the 3.3 million acres of Gila National Forest? Can you answer that? Who's going to enforce this plan?
You want me to answer that?
If you would, please.
Sorry. You know, we do have our own law enforcement people.
How many do you have?
We're at, we just got a couple more, so I believe we're at six, something like that, which is a lot for 3.3 million acres. I don't think this is going to be the major thing they're going to be looking for out there, but it'll be one of the things like we do for anything else out on the ground. So we'll take it as it comes, basically.
Through what jurisdiction or authority will you enforce this plan? Federal jurisdiction?
Our folks have federal authority, yes.
So does, so does that mean that's going to be a citation or an arrest, or the decision will have to appear in federal magistrate court, or you're going to take it through the state magistrate court?
I'm not sure at this point yet how exactly that'll work out. We have to consult with our law enforcement.
Does the federal magistrate, then they would have to go to either Cruces, or they would have to go to Albuquerque, and that would be pretty devastating. And we don't know where the corridors, as far as the camping or the motorized recreation vehicles, we don't know where these corridors are going to be located yet. Are we just forming another trailer park out there?
No. The corridors that are shown on the alternative maps that were provided in the DEIS show where the corridors are at. Three-year comment that you made is regards to the cultural resources. But during this time period, because we've been delaying our decision, the cultural resources surveys are pretty much 99% completed. There's a few spot checks to do, and so we know which corridors will stay on that map based on the cultural resources. So the three-year phasing that's discussed in the DEIS will be removed, and, you know, that part will be done, the corridors, pretty much the corridors, we have done some modifications because of cultural resources, because of the concerns regarding them, and the, you know, sensitivity of the sites, we're going to have to do probably some adjusting to some of the corridors. But I don't think, I have not seen the numbers, I don't know exactly, but there will not be a great difference in miles from the proposal you currently see.
I was, I felt good about what you said, that we're not there yet, and you're still taking comments, and you're still taking information. One of the things I would ask is this, please, take it step by step. You said you have four issues. The motorized routes, the motorized dispersed recreation, the motorized game retrieval, and area. If we could take each subject matter, discuss it thoroughly, come up with a plan, and what I'd like to see is using the community as part of not just information yet, but being part of the decision-making. We do the same thing with some other areas that the commission is dealing with, Anthony's on some of those, some of those committees, where they're making decisions. We would like that. I would. And because putting it all together and putting it out on the public, just all of that at once, it's, it's mind-boggling. It really is. So I wish you would consider that.
You know, we've been involved with this process for going on something like seven years now, and we have worked really hard to involve the public, as well as the different commissioners, in getting information and getting their input, and I don't believe any of these issues that we've come down to are new or different from what we've been talking with everybody for that time. So it's something that we've been really involved with and trying to get folks' input on, and I've also appreciated the input from the commissioners. And we'll continue to do that.
I appreciate that.
I mean, this is not a one-time, we'll never talk about this again thing.
Okay.
So we'll keep on doing it, believe me, and that's very important to us.
And like I said, I appreciate the Forest Service, I appreciate you. I'm not anti-forest, I'm not anti-federal government, I've never sued the government, and I've never sued the forest. So I'm, I'm working with you, I want to, I'm very sincere about that. And thank you for answering my questions, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Judge Hall. Commissioner Hall? Sorry. Mr. Ramos?
I call him Judge all the time, too.
He was the judge when I was in high school, I think.
Ms. Russell, thank you very much for coming today, but how many supervisors have actually worked on this? Just, just to, can let the people know. I believe it's been four?
I think I'm the actual third, not counting. So we've had some turnover, and that's the same with the other legislative body, as y'all and everybody else is aware of. So we do have some of that, it's, it's coming down to me and my term to make the decision. It's coming down to me and my term to make the decision, so.
And that's exactly it. And I said that because there's, I'm sure there's been three sets of commissioners working on this also. And it's really tough. And no offense to you personally, Ms. Russell, but I find it hard to see one person have total control of what alternative is going to be chosen, especially.
You're not going to have that.
And again, no offense towards you as a person, because I know that's your job, but the way the law was written was very poor. I also feel that there should have been more coordination with the counties and actually sitting with the counties and trying to figure out what routes are best for everyone. And when I say counties, I should probably be saying governing bodies, because we do have three municipalities that should have a word on this also. There's been no coordination with local governments, which is in a total violation of the Federal Lands Policy and Management Act of 1976, FLYMA. The travel management plan is a direct assault on our culture, customs, that have been well-established since long before the foundation of the United States Forest Service, 1905, and before FLYMA in 1976. The impact to all businesses within the area has not been studied, which is definitely not fair to the businesses within, within the counties and municipalities. All counties in the planning area have a higher percentage of disabled elderly residents compared to the rest of the state, and it says so there in the EIS. Grant County alone has approximately 6,140 elderly and disabled people within. Within Catherine, Grant, Hidalgo, and Sierra, there are over 12,000 residents that are elderly or disabled. The Rehabilitation Act of 1973, B. 504, states, "No person with a disability can be denied participation in a federal program that is available to all other people solely because of his or her disability." And I stand by these people that are disabled and elderly and we really need to keep these roads open so that they can keep enjoying our forests as we have for many, many years. I'm a fourth generation here in Grant County and I take pride in that. And I know when I chose to stay here and make a business here and keep my family here, the forest had a great impact in that decision. And I know it has a great impact in most of the people here. I would also like to see a show of hands of who is local. When I say local, within the four counties, can you please raise your hand? Thank you very much. I had brought the question before up on, are we looking at what our locals really want? Because in the EIS, it also states that locals are the people that really use the forest above everybody else. And I myself am one of those persons. Whether I'm guiding hunters or camping with my kids, fishing with my kids, or hunting with my kids, I do use this forest. And I expect my wishes to be looked at also. When we look at the activity participation, we don't know where the numbers came from. In 2006, I believe is when the EIS states that the activity participation was taken. I tell you what, I spent a lot of time out in that forest in 2006 like I do every year and I not one time had a questionnaire given to me. And I know that's the way a lot of these other people out here feel that I've talked to before this meeting. That wasn't taken into consideration. Fieldwood gathering. In page 21 of the EIS, "Fieldwood gathering may occur outside of the fieldwood gathering areas. However, motor vehicle access would be limited to roadside parking along designated open roads." That came directly out of that EIS and that is, I just cannot see that. I know a lot of people that go out and, law-abiding citizens that go get their permits and then they go out and, again, law-abiding, they go find trees they can take and they bring them home to burn. What's going to happen when we're limited to some access and there's no longer trees to cut that are near the road? Are we going to get cited for backing up to an area and getting our firewood? That's a big question. I know a lot of people have that question because they ask meaning. The no-action alternative is incomplete. A complete EIS is very essential. There within, it states, I actually, grab my notes here. It states an alternative B, which is compared to all the other alternatives in making any decision, that we have 4,604 miles of road. But in our research, we're showing that 1,169 miles of the ML-1 roads are not counted within. So whatever is passed or chosen, whatever alternative is chosen by our supervisor, those roads will not count, so automatically they'll be thrown out. And I really believe whenever we are comparing the other alternatives and stating that 24% of the roads, if we choose alternative D, which was actually referred to for the past few years, we're looking at doing away with 24% of our roads. If we add 1,169 more miles to that road, we're looking at more like 52% of our roads. And that is way too much. We've got to go ahead and keep our roads open for our people. At this point, I'd go ahead and yield to you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gabe. Okay, first of all, I want to tell you how much I appreciate you guys having me at your office today and I got to basically preview my questions for you, so I'm assuming you got really good answers now. That was fair. You know that a lot of my questions come from an economic background because that's kind of where I come from, is an economic background. And I, like Gabe, I'm a fourth generation in Grant County and I'm raising the fifth generation now. So talking about economics, probably, the best advice I've been given is probably about 400 to 500 jobs, private sector jobs, are derived directly from the Hela National Forest and the counties. And when I read the socioeconomic impact report, I felt it didn't do it justice and I told you guys that the other day. I'm not being sneaky with you. It didn't feel as though it did it justice. Even on page 257 of your very own draft environmental impact statement, right here, it states, and I quote, "The precise relationship between miles and road and economic impacts is unknown. It's assumed that jobs and income increase with more miles of road and decrease with fewer miles of road." That being said, if that's true, then any decrease in miles of road would decrease employment in the county. Well, obviously, you know, the county cannot withstand, we're not a very wherewithal county to begin with, we can't stand a lot of job loss. So that, I really believe that that's one of the things that needs to be gone back and looked at. In fact, further on in your, in your DIS, it even stated that they didn't know how many jobs are going to be lost. So it seems to me like if they'd have done a good job, we would know with each alternative how many jobs are going to be lost. I just can't reiterate how important that is to me. Jobs in the county are just, they're precious. If you've got one here, you hold on to it and it's very important to me. So Gabe stole just a little bit of my thunder, but also in your socioeconomic report, that's not in this document, that's a separate document, just so everybody knows, but you can get it on the website. And it was prepared by Delilah Jorgal, I think, something like that. Is that right? Okay, also in your socioeconomic report, it states that the elderly and disabled population of the four county area affected by the travel management plan, they're about 5% to 10% more disabled than the average of the rest of New Mexico. I was totally shocked at that. And I agree with Gabe that those people need to have access to the forest. And that being said, one of the things that came to me is how does the draft environmental impact statement address the American Disabilities Act? You can answer that.
You know, with the American Disabilities Act, we are required to provide reasonable access to an area that is expected for that area. So the way it's been kind of explained to me, because I called and talked to our coordinator for ADA in Washington, is it does not cover this sort of situation. It more covers regular wheelchair-type things. And I can ask Lisa if I'm explaining that right. Am I saying that right?
Yeah, I'm trying to find the words. So basically, if, it's sort of like, basically, in terms of how we deal with the ADA is not how, it's not like, if the building is constructed to have ADA access, they have access. We do not have to create something additional. We are not allowed to create something additional for ADA or age and disabled. So through the travel management, you know, where people talk a lot about age and disabled to be able to travel cross-country or to be able to use ATV to get from point A to point B, if the public, general public can do so, they can do so, but we do not have to, in federal law, create something additional. We're not allowed to create anything additional. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the point we'll take it and we're not asking you to create anything additional at all. We understand the rule. We understand the cross-country travel. We understand no more new roads. We understand that roads marked closed will be closed and all, you know, we understand all that. And I'm coming from a standpoint, I have a little cousin that's a decorated Marine that lost his legs in Iraq, that liked to bow hunt and it's going to just make it that much tougher every time he wants to go hunt. So that's where I'm coming from on my ADA question. I'm going to see if any of the commissioners have round two real quick before we move on to the next.
I don't have anything else. I want to thank you. Again, I'd like to thank you also. I mean, I know you all have a very, very hard job and I know you've been putting a lot of miles, a lot of hard work into this. But again, you know, there's a lot of stuff that is skewed and it's not something that I'm sure you did intentionally, but I think these are things that do need to be corrected before there's any major decision done that's going to affect the welfare of our residents. Again, how many people out here actually want some roads closed? How many people out here want to keep our forest as is? Wow, that's a big majority. Thank you very much. I did want to also mention that we did pass that resolution through the County Commissioners affiliate, which all 33 counties do participate within. And it got voted on unanimously to go ahead and, go ahead and stick with our guns and oppose the travel management plans throughout the whole state of New Mexico, not just in Grant County, not just in southern New Mexico, but the whole state of New Mexico. And it was passed unanimously, a very similar resolution in the Board of Directors meeting last week. And we're real proud of that because, you know, sometimes you wonder if we're headed in the right direction and whenever you have unanimous votes, you know you're headed in the right direction. And I just want to make sure that we capitalized on that because that's real important to us. That's all I have.
Okay. At this time, we're going to allow some limited public comments. All right, there's going to be some rules tonight. We are not going to engage another member of the audience. We are not going to heckle or otherwise distract a person speaking from the podium. As I stated before the meeting, there will be no civil discourse. It will not be tolerated. So tonight, I'm going to start with the citizens who raised their hand to have a more restrictive travel management plan. And then after we're done with those citizens, we will move to the citizens that want a less restrictive travel management plan. Please make all comments to the commission. Treat my guests, the Forest Service, with dignity that they deserve. If you're reiterating a position of a speaker that was prior to you, you may be cut off. I don't want to hear the same thing seven or eight times, just so you can say something. New comments, new ideas, that's what we're looking for. So Abby and I.
Would you like to set a timeline for speakers?
You know, we're going to set a pretty restrictive timeline. We need to be pithy. However, if the commission wishes to ask you questions, you may get to stand up there a little longer. If the commission chooses not to ask you questions, we may ask you to sit down. So at this time, what we will do is, citizens who wish to have a more restrictive travel management plan, we're going to start with three minutes and we'll stick with our guns throughout the night. So please raise your hand and I'll call on you. Donna.
Thank you.
Say your name for the record, please.
My name is Donna Stevens and I am the Director of the Upper Hela Watershed Alliance, which is a watershed protection nonprofit group with about 200 local members. I've been attending all of these private and public travel management meetings since 2005 and also open houses, like in the meetings in Silver City, Reserve, Glenwood, TRC, Lourdesburg, all over the place, many, many meetings, many opportunities for public input. There are a few things that I believe everyone in this room can agree on. We all value the Hela National Forest. We all want access to it and we all know that it needs to be protected for future generations. When the Hela National Forest released their draft environmental impact statement two years ago, their preferred alternative kept open more than 3,300 miles of roads. I've been saying this over and over again like a broken record for years. That's enough roads to drive from San Diego to Maine. Disabled and elderly people, anyone who can get in a vehicle can drive over 3,300 miles of roads. We can be reasonably sure that the Forest Service's final environmental impact statement will be similar to their draft, muscle manos. Now, we're kind of quibbling about what roads should be open and which harmful or unnecessary roads need to be closed. In a democracy such as ours, where there is a wide range of opinions, we need to realize that compromise is a necessity. Not everyone will get what they want from travel management. Tree huggers will want more roads closed. ATV huggers will want more roads open. The Forest Service has to balance the desires of multiple user groups, but that's not their only job. It's also their responsibility to protect the forest's streams, watersheds, native flora, and wildlife habitat. We need to be responsible adults, too, and we need to accept that we win some and we lose some. Remember, 3,300 miles of roads is a lot of access. Cindy here is holding up a map using the Forest Service's own GIS data. This map, you can see that kind of ugly pink color, is all the areas that fall within one mile of a road that the Forest Service proposes to leave open. So what you can see on this map is that it is So what you can see on this map is that it is very difficult to get more than one mile from an open road in the forest. It's a lot of access. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, do you have a question?
I've got a question for you. Did you say that you went to very many roads all over the state? Did you get paid to go to most states?
I did. It is my job as a representative of the Upper Hila Watershed Alliance.
What would you like to add? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would somebody else like to speak? Yes, sir, in the plaid shirt. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it. I would like to just bring up one of many, many issues that I think you should be aware of.
Can you state your name for us, please?
Sure. My name is Larry McLeod. I am a resident of Silver City.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that.
The main issue that hasn't been brought up yet, and I think needs to be considered, is that the deferred maintenance or backlog of maintenance on the Hila National Forest, according to the Hila National Forest, is over $200 million. $200 million of deferred backlog maintenance. The budget for road maintenance on the forest annually is about $1 million. There's a huge discrepancy between the amount of money that's available for maintenance and the number of roads that need maintenance. And once roads are not properly maintained, they become unsafe, they create incredible negative impacts on natural resources, and something has to give. Either the county needs to come up with money to pay for the maintenance, or they need to lobby Congress to come up with more money for road maintenance, or the forest needs to close roads. So I think you need to take that into account. It's a major issue, and it's not being addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The gentleman in the back took his vest on. Please state your name for the record when you get there.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Daniel Patterson. I'm in Commissioner Hall's district, and thanks for holding this forum on a very important issue that's facing us here. I'm a hunter, a member of the NRA, spent time out on public lands my whole life, and I'm sick and tired of my rights being disrespected. I'm a pro-wilderness hunter, and I'm sick and tired of when I'm trying to get my deer or my elk, people all around on ATVs, trucks. The hunting quality and hunting experience on the Hila National Forest is degraded by an excess of roads. And I think most of the fellow hunters here are somewhat conservation-minded, but the mentality that you gotta shoot from your truck almost, or you gotta be right next to your game to pick it up, well, that's not what my dad taught me. I think a lot of us learn to hunt with a little more ethic than what we might be seeing on the land, and it's always important to challenge ourselves. The Hila National Forest is very important to us here. It's important to our quality of life. We're right there on the front lines, but it's also owned by all of our fellow Americans. This is land that belongs to everyone. This is the commons. It's part of what makes our nation great. Other nations in the world are envious of the network of public lands that we have, and we have to make sure that we don't spoil it, and that's the tough job that the Forest Service has. It's a difficult job. One of the things I notice, and when we talk about the access for disabled people, the access to these roads, boy, unless you got a really big truck that's four-wheel drive with a lot of clearance and probably willing to damage that truck, most of these roads you can't drive on. They're in such poor condition, so if you just have a regular car, you can't get on these roads. These roads are in terrible condition, so it's a myth that anybody could go up and down any of these roads. I can't even get my truck up and down most of these roads, and when they're in that bad a shape, we have erosion. We know that with road density going up, fires can start. They usually do start along roads, so this is a tough situation. It's important for the county to remain involved, but I, for one, am frustrated that this process has gone on for years and years, and in the meantime, nothing has been done to protect the forest. The status quo is not good for the Hila National Forest, and the idea that we should just delay, you know, keep waiting and waiting and waiting, I think is a mistake.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So I just want to conclude, there's a big difference between access and excess. I think there's excess on the Hila National Forest, and closing some roads would certainly protect legitimate access and the use that most people desire. Thank you very much.
Thank you. In the back, the lady, is that Kian? Come up here, Kian.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening. State your name for us, please. It's in the yard, but the TV light doesn't.
I know. My name is Kim McCrery. I'm regional director and staff scientist with the New Mexico Wilderness Alliance, and tonight I am speaking for my organization, but I'm also speaking for myself. I'm a resident of Grant County. I'm a biologist, and I'm someone who hikes and camps all over the Hila, which I think is some of the most beautiful country I've ever seen. Now, I don't want to reiterate what other folks have said prior to me, so I'll just go through that very quickly.
We appreciate that.
But I do want to say that I have to drive to where I go in the forest. And yes, I have driven ORVs in the Boo Hila and in the Hila National Forest. Now, what I want to say is there's not a single one of us that's going to like everything about the Forest Service's final decision. And we've had loads of time to comment, as they showed us in their presentation. And I realize that there might be some roads closed that I don't want closed because I can't get to where I want to go. But there's one thing I ask myself if they want to close that road, and I say, why? And if it has something to do with damaging riparian habitat, so we don't have healthy watersheds, or if it has something to do with soil erosion, so that vegetation doesn't grow, so game doesn't have anything to feed on, so hunters don't have anything to hunt, or that livestock grazers, livestock owners don't have any grass for cow to graze, then I've got to say to myself, I have a responsibility, particularly in a democracy, to say that, you know what, maybe that's just too bad for me. I think they should go ahead and close that road, because I have a responsibility to future generations. That's what we think about when we have a democracy. Now, I do have a question that I would like to ask the commissioners respectfully, and that is, under what conditions would you support the closure of a road to motorize the vehicle use?
You know, the one thing that I can tell you tonight is this is not a question and answer period, so we'll pass.
All right. Well, you know, that's fair enough, and I will come to you personally to ask you that question. And finally, what I would like to do is take this opportunity. I would like to show everyone here a map. This map was done in 2009. These are all the roads in New Mexico. Now, when I showed this map to someone, they asked me a very good question, and that question was, aren't these, doesn't this include some of the trail network? And I thought, that's a really good question. That's a legitimate question. So I actually called the person that made this map, and I asked him. What he told me was he used the road network, he used the road network databases, so there aren't trails included in this map. So this is the road network that we have in New Mexico.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Bush?
Yes.
That part of that corner that has a real people, that space that is the Hila National Forest, right?
That is because we have two wilderness areas here.
Yeah, exactly.
But if you look at the acreage, that is a small portion relative to the 3.3 million acres we have. Thank you.
Okay. Do I see another hand? Yes, sir. You in the back, plaid jacket.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is John Warner. My wife and I live in Silver City, and I have a little different perspective than maybe some of the folks are related. Very briefly, 11 months ago, my wife and I were retired and living in Mexico. Basically, she got a little bit bored with retirement and decided she wanted to go back to work. She's a psychologist, and both of us had lived in New Mexico, different locations, for over 40 years, and she looked around at job opportunities. She had offers to work in Washington State, Oregon, Colorado, and New Mexico. She didn't want to look everywhere around the country to work. She picked her spots very, very carefully. She chose Silver City, and I, as a flexible, good husband, knowing that a happy wife is a happy life, said, I can go with you. And so basically, what happened is this. 11 months ago, we moved to Silver City, not just because she had a job, but primarily because of one of your biggest competitive advantages, the Hila National Forest and wilderness. We didn't want to go other places in New Mexico, or Washington, or Oregon, or those other states I mentioned. We wanted to be here because of the Hila Forest and wilderness, which, by the way, I am in at least five days a week. At least five days a week. Obviously, that means I'm still retired. She's back at work. The thing I want to point out to you from an economic development standpoint, I've got degrees in economics and business, from an economic development standpoint, you wouldn't have our tax revenue, all the money we're spending in this county, because we could choose to live elsewhere. Your biggest competitive advantage for both of us, for our lifestyle and what we want, is the forest and the wilderness. We don't want it open to more access. The fact of the matter is, it's a unique resource. The second point I would make is if you open this resource, if you open this resource to more access, it's very difficult, as history will show around this country, to close it back up. So that's a different perspective. That's why we're here. We appreciate being here. We love being here. Thanks for the opportunity to address you.
Okay, John, I just want to point out one thing here. There's no more access. It's not asking for more.
Right, but we would like to have it restricted, and we would prefer not to have as much access as there is.
However, you did come with it as it is.
Of course we did, but the point of the matter is that we could have chosen other places, too, and we chose it because of the forest and the wilderness.
We promised not to change it from when you got here.
Thanks very much.
Okay, we're gonna move to the other side now. Got a pretty good perspective, so at this time, we're gonna keep the same rules. Do not engage another member of the audience. Do not heckle or otherwise distract the person speaking from the floor. You guys know the rules, so...
I'm William Mize. I live next to the Hila National Forest. My property borders the forest. I've been in the forest my entire life, since the time I was 12. We have designated wilderness areas that are restricted to no motorized vehicles, and I find vehicle tracks inside the wilderness a lot. Three years ago, I reported a restricted area to the Forest Service, that there was one of their boundaries, it's a metal pipe that goes across the canyon, that it did get washed out, and there is access in that canyon, for three years. Guess what? Today, went there last week, wide-open canyon. The barrier's still there. Nobody has a key to lock, and Forest Service will not go repair the barrier. The only person that's supposed to have access to that canyon is the permittee for that allotment. The permittee does not even have a key because I asked him for it. So why put out more regulations when you can't regulate what you have to begin with? You want to propose new regulations, at least show us that you're taking care of what you got already.
Billy, address the commission, please.
Yes, sir.
All right.
It's just a little hard to choke.
I understand.
When you've lived a certain way your entire life, and then you see these resources that they have that they don't take care of, and then we're trying to be restricted more, our economy's in the tank, so let's do more things to hurt our economy. I just don't see it. I don't agree with it. I appreciate your time and letting me talk.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bush.
I was born and raised in Deming, and I've been going to the Forest Service since 1942. That was my first remembrance of going to the Hila National Forest. We went up to Willow Creek, and I live in Silver City now, and I have noticed through the years, the roads will disappear on their own. Two cases in point, we used to go in where Willow Creek hit Helida, and we would go down, drive down Helida till we got as far down as we could drive. Through the years, the water come down and the roads shut off. You can't get down it. And then if you go to Negrito, far up Negrito at the campgrounds, there are several roads that head off south. You can't get down any of them because they were not used. The trail sign is still there, but you can't even get an ATV up them. So those roads are out. So through the elimination of not using the roads, then they shut down. But there was a question, and last fall, we went to Sacramento. We have a family graveyard over there, and I go over there periodically to check on it. So we come back, and we had a burritos, and we were, my wife and I and daughter, we were gonna stop at a Forest Service campground. We went to four, and they were all padlocked. Now, that was the same period that Negrito campgrounds were locked out. The Negrito was caused of chance of flooding. We could find no reason for the ones in the Sacramento Mountains closed. So we drove into the Forest Service headquarters, and in the visitor parking lot, there was not a car in the visitor's parking lot, but in the employees and the Forest Service, there was 37 vehicles. We counted them, and I cannot find out why those campgrounds were closed. Nobody has an answer for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
Mr. Commissioner, Chairman, the Commissioner's staff, I thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this morning, this evening.
State your name.
My name is Earl J. Montoya. I'm a resident of Silver City. I am, I was born in San Lorenzo, so I essentially grew up here. I want to keep my statement brief. I would just state that I believe the EIS is not legal for the following four reasons. First, the numbers are wrong. The 1,800 miles of official legally roads were left out, as mentioned before. Also, anything in the EIS is going to be closed by default. If you account for the 1,800 miles, the numbers, as mentioned before, for closures are not the 24%, but could be somewhere close to 60%. Second, the use of the roads was based on attributes such as road miles, acreage, streams crossed, and those things, if you look at them carefully, have nothing.
crossed, and those things, if you look at them carefully, have nothing to do with actual use. Just give you an example. If you have a road that's one mile long, and 120 people use it, that's use. If you have a road that's 100 miles long, and only two people use it, that's not use. So when you claim all the miles, you have to be careful how you actually claim usage. This thing that was mentioned in one of the slides, Executive Order 116440, that was proposed and put forth by President Nixon in 1974. If you look at that carefully, the authority for the travel management plan, the TMR, is based on this executive order, which does not at all mention roads. And I'll repeat it. The executive order does not mention roads. Fourth, the Council for Environmental Quality, the EEQ, that was supposed to form the rules on how the EIS was to be done. It was supposed to be done in open, it was supposed to be transparent, it was supposed to state all the criteria for making the decisions. Nowhere have I found those things adhered to. So forgiven the above, I recommend that this whole process be thrown out, not entirely thrown out, but started from scratch. The information gathered to date is to be retained and used for a new plan. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, and the county.
Commissioners, public, thank you allow you, or thanking you to allow me to speak today. Several concerns. If I wanted to go camping and park on the side of a roadway, I would park in Walmart parking lot. That's not camping. I've been camping my entire life. I'm a very respectful camper, hunter, and an avid outdoorsman. Why am I punished for people who have violated the laws? There are laws on the books for people who ride cross-country on OHVs and are not enforced. We passed this management plan, and I assure you, there is not enough law enforcement in the state of New Mexico to enforce the violations that will still occur, based on the lack of people's morals in today's society. There is a way huger problem than OHVUs and our road closures. With that said, I'm an avid hunter, I have hunted, I spend 75, at least, minimum of 75 days. People here know how much I hunt, minimum hunting time, doesn't include camping. I'm successful in all my hunts, 90% of the time, with OHVUs driving right by me. Yes, it's frustrating sometimes, but if I wanted to hunt in a primitive place without OHVUs, I'd go hunt the wilderness. And if we wanted to fix our roads and have money in the budget for the United States Forest Service to fix existing roads, maybe if we start, stop having frivolous lawsuits against them, we'd have the money. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope you can tolerate my reading glasses, I'm hopeless without them. My name is Joanne Spivak. I'm with the New Mexico Off-Highway Vehicle Alliance. Thank you, commissioners. Couple of things. First, I want to say, the decision is not a vote or a political compromise. The decision is supposed to be based on science, and there are rules that every Forest Service must follow in order to do their EIS. And this is where we feel that the EIS is not a legal document, and a rational decision cannot be based on it, because of those missing miles. First of all, I want to explain why those miles are missing. About 1,800 miles, it's at least that much. There's 630 miles of trail, so almost 1,200 miles of road. The Forest Service is very motivated to keep those miles out, because of what happens when the NEPA process meets the travel management rule. The NEPA process says that only the roads and trails that are shown in the EIS can be chosen to be designated. You can't choose from things that are not in the EIS. Then, when you look at the travel management rule, it says, "Anything that's not designated is closed by default." So any road and trail that's not included in the EIS will be closed by default. And I think it's important for the commissioners and the public to understand how those two things work together, NEPA and the travel management rule. It's hand in glove. And what we've seen all over the country is the primary flaw, is the strategy of the Forest Service of deliberately leaving things out, so they will be closed by default, they're swept under the table, they're never discussed in the EIS. Where should those be, those 1,800 miles? They should be in the no-action alternative. The no-action alternative, if you want to look into the EIS, is the heart of the process. The forest cannot just do this EIS any old way it pleases. There are rules about how they have to do it. And the EIS, that no-action alternative is the heart of the process, because all the other alternatives must be compared to it. That's where you go in and you see 24% closure. Because if the no-action is wrong, that's wrong. Why else is the no-action wrong? They based it on an estimate of where the public drives now. That's wrong. No-action is supposed to be management direction. What does the forest's plan say? What's legal to use? Not your guess about where people go. How is that decision made to leave those roads out? We don't know. There's no disclosed mythology, methodology. That's illegal, too. They made a decision outside the EIS to eliminate those roads. That's called pre-decisional. That's illegal, too. The 1982 planning rule has words to say about the no-action alternative, which is the heart of the EIS. It tells us what should be in the no-action alternative. It says that in paragraph six, that the no-action alternative reflects the current level of goods and services provided by the forest unit. This no-action alternative does not, the EIS is not legal. We feel it's extremely fraudulent, and we're totally opposed to it.
Okay, thank you very much. Your time's up. I'm going to take two more, so you go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Valeria Osmer. I am a 10th-generation New Mexico citizen. My family has used responsibly the Forest Service my entire life, and 10 generations before us. I grew up in the middle of the national forest. On all boundaries of my property, there was surrounding national forest. It's a large part of my heritage, and I have seen many portions of this forest that probably not many people have. I feel like it would be extremely restrictive to me personally and to the raising of my daughter, the 11th-generation New Mexico citizen, if roads were to be closed. We intentionally travel out little-traveled roads, because those are the places that are least affected by human travel. Those are the places where you can experience nature in its greatest form. Also, I feel like we have failed to take into account laws that already exist, that have not been enforced, that are existing laws prevent people from shooting from their vehicle from roads. And I know that that's not enforced regularly. And also, my family has been heavily involved in the mining of this state for a long time. And the closure of certain roads would prevent legally sanctioned rights for us to be able to explore our geological and mineralogical resources. Without these resources, we end up utilizing things like blood ore from South Africa. It's not readily known, but up to 85% of precious metals found in electronics are sourced from blood ore, from militias. It's paying for militias with your cell phones, which have a large quantity of gold in them. If we are suddenly restricting access to these mineralogical resources, then we're condoning this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Well, I said two, so who's it going to be? That was one, so. Can you get the blue jacket back there? Sorry, we've got to call it somewhere, because I've still got a bunch of commissioners in the audience that I'm going to ask.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name's Bill Waldman. I'm a resident of Grant County. One of the things that concerns me about the road closure probability is firefighting that no one's mentioned. The high-speed initial attack resources the Forest Service has had in the past have been greatly diminished. Road access to fires is one of the primary ways to get resources to a fire today. And with more and more roads closers, that means longer and longer delays to get resources to fires within the forest. The fire we had this summer, the fire in Arizona last year, were cases of really bad fires and the inability of them to be controlled. And if we seal off the areas once the roads close, it is, it's going to go back to nature, and fire equipment can't get over the road. So without the initial attack facilities that we used to have, and very few of those resources are left, we used to have 42 air tankers, now there's 12. So the ability to send air resources to a fire initially, which used to come out of Grant County, no longer exists. It may take hours to days to get those resources. So the resources that they have have to go by road. There are not enough helitack crews, not enough way to transport the people, and if these roads are closed, the firefighting problems are only going to get worse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this time, I'm going to.
Thank you very much. Just like to thank you for all his years of service. He's the guy that's in the cockpit of those airplanes, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I know I've got a couple, at least two commissioners from adjoining counties, I was going to ask them if they, if they had anything to say. Commissioner Shannon, Commissioner Alred, would you, one of you like to?
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Commissioners. Good evening to everyone. My name is Dar Shannon. I am a Hidalgo County Commissioner. I am also, though, here representing.
Could you like?
I am also here representing, well, within my commission duties, the hunters, the fishermen, the recreationalists from Hidalgo County, who very, very loyally love the Gila National Forest. The Gila National Forest is just a very small portion in Hidalgo County, but our people come to Silver City and to Glenwood via Catherine County and participate in everything they can. And I've had several of my constituents tell me that they are very, very upset about the road closing, road closing participation, that they don't feel that it's fair, they don't really understand it. I know we all need to be held responsible for our own actions, but the people from my county really don't understand how devastating these road closing, this creating smaller access to roads is, they're, they're, they're very unhappy. And our county helps Grant County, because we, and Catherine County, because we do participate in what you all have. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Alred?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a lifelong resident in Catherine County. I've been involved in the travel management process since it began. The past year, I was elected to office the county commission. In Catherine County, the travel management process, because of some of the things that have been mentioned here tonight, like the 1,800 missing miles, this is a redundancy of Forest Service programs. Alternative B was the core alternative that all the rest of the alternatives were supposed to be based around, and that was total transparency. And they haven't done that. They clearly haven't been totally transparent. So in the Gila, and Catherine County probably is the biggest part of the Gila, we're going to lose 60% of our roads and access. Also, in the past 30 years, some of the same programs that were the cumulative impact studies and how they adversely affect our county's economies, haven't been properly done. So we have a 30-year history of this very kind of thing. They've devastated our economy, we've lost tax income in our county, our crime has risen, poverty has risen. In the Santa Fe National Forest, the New Mexico Off-Highway Vehicle Alliance is suing the Santa Fe National Forest for the same issues that we're talking about here tonight. This program is flawed. It's not a good program. It will damage, and it will keep people from, from accessing the forest. And it will hurt our economies, and hurt our citizens there, and it will hurt our tax base. And I'm very much opposed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So that's going to end our public input portion of the, of the meeting tonight. That was about an hour and 15 minutes of public input on a meeting that wasn't going to have any public input. So at this time, I'm going to ask for closing comments from our commissioners. I don't have any.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for everyone that came, came to this meeting today. It really says a lot about what type of people you are, and what you stand for. Really do appreciate it. And most of all, thank you to the United States Forest Service for coming through. I hope that nothing here is taken personal, because I know that sometimes, you are the man, well, all the time, you are the messenger, and you've got to get things done one way or another. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your attention. Thank you very much for everybody. I really appreciate the civil discourse tonight. It's a change for these type of meetings, and I think we've got a lot more accomplished. My dear gratitude to the United States Forest Service, both Lisa and Kelly. I appreciate you guys coming. And at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So move. Second. All those papers, so you can pop say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.